Legal immigration system in the world. We allow more people in than the whole rest of the world. It's broken, it needs to be fixed because it's lawless. Anyway, but on the other hand, I've looked at this issue quite unemotionally. And it's not really an immigration issue. This is a constitutional issue. And that's why I come down on the side that Lehigh County is not a sanctuary county. Because define what a sanctuary county is. I think complying with the Constitution does not qualify you as a sanctuary county. Lehigh County honors ICE detainee requests. They cooperate with ICE. They notify ICE. The one thing that resolution said is, we will not hold someone once judicially, we have no right to hold someone. We all should agree that that's wrong. Because in the Galazza case, it did turn out he was an American citizen who had to sit in jail for an extra three days. Who's comfortable with sitting in jail due to a mistake with no judicial process, no due process, no probable cause? Would anybody accept that? In fact, according to ICE's own numbers, this happened to over 800 US citizens over 2012 to 2014. So, the reason ICE detainee requests are requests, although they make it, they use the term "you shall detain," is because they can't mandate it because it would violate the Tenth Amendment. That's very good. That's a great protection we have. So, again, it's an immigration, not an immigration issue, it's a constitutional issue. You know, when the other side was abusing power the last eight years, my side was outraged about all the constitutional violations and rightfully so. Luckily, some on the other side agreed. Not enough, but okay. It was a constitutional issue, it was a constitutional issue. However, my side can't just ignore the Constitution out of convenience on one of their issues. That's just as wrong, and I consider it trickfully wrong because that's my side, so it has to be spoken out against. But let's boil this whole issue down. Here's what happens. There's a suspected illegal alien. Okay? I think ICE should report him. But based on a phone call, people are being detained in jail beyond any legal probable cause, due process, or a warrant. That applies to any person. You have to have a constitutional, due process reason to hold someone. We can't say it's okay to detain someone based on a phone call from some federal bureaucrat. Heck, I thought that's what the Tea Party opposed. That's why we have the Fourth and the Fifth Amendment. That's specifically why they were written. You couldn't have the king's man acting in the name of the king, whether it was official or not, detaining people. And that's at the heart of the matter. And it's interesting, out of the hundred and some jurisdictions, half all have the same issue. They will cooperate in every instance, they will detain people beyond, because that's what we're talking about. If they're sitting in prison, ICE can come and get them. Lehigh County's not slipping them out the back door. Some jurisdictions actually are. Those are sanctuary cities, and that has to be stopped. But to detain someone beyond the length, if you make bail, you're released, you can't be held anymore. It's certainly not by a phone call from some federal official. I want John Q. Public detained. Well, do you have probable cause or a warrant? No. My bosses and I want John Q. Public detained. That's not America. That's wrong. The fix is not have Lehigh County deal with this issue. The fix is to have the federal government change the law that all I-247 documents will be accompanied by a judge's signature or a warrant. And then we'll happily comply. But until then, no. Because we can't condone violating someone's civil rights, I don't care how passionate you feel about an issue. Thank you.
My name is Jude Denis. I reside in Lehigh County and I run Power Northeast, which is a faith-based social justice organization rooted in the idea that radical love and sustained organizing can change this country, this community, this state. So, I'm here basically because I want to actually thank you. Because it's a very rare thing to thank a body of government officials for doing the right thing. And this is not about sanctuary or no sanctuary. It's about that you created an extra step that ICE must actually honor before we turn someone over to them. And why that is important is because Ernesto Galazza was racially profiled and no one listened to him. No one wanted to hear him say he was a citizen because they had a picture in their minds of who he was because of what he looked like. So, I want to point this to the poem at the foot of the Statue of Liberty, which says, "Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send these, the homeless, tempests to me." And I want to relate that to my own story. I was seven when my grandparents, grandmother brought me to this country from Haiti. And I had become, because of the social institutions here, because of the schools, because of the mentorship, because of the organizations I've been a part of, a valuable member of this community. And that is what we want. Lehigh County is growing. I mean, every day I look and there are Pakistanis and there are Syrians and there are Jews and there are Ukrainians, there are Russians next door to me, there are Chinese, there are Hindus. And the reality is, that is light. That we are bringing all sorts of people here is actually creating the foundation for our growth into the future. And I want to make sure Latinos are a critical part of that. And they have come here, some of them are Puerto Ricans, and are still denied the right to be American because they're racially profiled. When I moved here in 2001, there was an RCN installer in my apartment, and he said, "You look like nice people. Don't go to Allentown, there are too many Puerto Ricans." And honestly, this is what we must fight. We must name the bigotry that is here, and we must agree that together we can overcome it. So I want to thank you and commend you for doing good work. Thank you.
And now for something completely different. My name is Jeffrey Anthony, I reside here in Allentown. I'd like to recount to you a personal experience that I know has occurred to a great many Lehigh County citizens as well. And it might require some action on the part of the county, or it might require some policy formulation. To be brief, I Googled my name, as many people do very often, especially those paying like myself. And I found that I was being investigated by Lehigh County Clerk of Judicial Records Andrea Nigle. She was supposedly helping a private citizen here in Lehigh County investigate me. Now, it turns out I spoke to her and there was no truth to this at all. She wasn't doing this. But this individual might be known to you. I will forego mentioning his name, but I'm thinking you might be able to guess his blog or... I handed out handouts here that might make this go quickly and save it within two minutes. A lot of it. He's notorious for having taken a picture of a female Assistant District Attorney and superimposed a livid red smack mark and joked, joked, that she had been, pardon my language, but it's his, bitch slapped. This individual also delusionately claims that his hate blog is being advised by Judge Marie Santos. He's off his rocker. Nonetheless, he's claiming that the county is using taxpayer-funded resources to help him in his investigation of an individual, myself, who has done nothing wrong whatsoever. My channel's been in Lehigh County for over 250 years. Worst thing I've ever gotten is parking ticket. Many other Lehigh County residents can tell you the same thing. What I'm asking for is, I would hope the county could send a cease and desist letter to this individual to tell him to take these lies down off the internet. And I would hope there might be some policy that could keep him from doing it to other people, because there are other people who have experienced this or are too frightened to come here and tell you about it. That's not right. That shouldn't be happening. Thank you very much for your time. Good evening.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move along with our Mr. Burmey... Oh, I'm sorry. I have one more question.
Just one more comment. I don't have all the facts and figures, and I agree with most of what the immigration people have said today. My name is Erin Keller. I grew up here in the Lehigh Valley. I just want to say that I realized that right up the street is the church where the Liberty Bell was kept when the British came and tried to kick us back as a nation. If we take a look at our history, if you go across the street from the Liberty Bell at the LBHN Arena, that's where there was a Revolutionary War hospital, and the people fighting for those ideals that we hold dear gave up their lives. I want to say that as the granddaughter of people fresh off the boat who spoke German, I absolutely feel that we must encourage people who are immigrants to be welcome here, that we should not be judging people by their color, their race, or their religion. I saw that Muhammad Ali's son has recently been pulled off a plane twice because of his name. I don't want something to happen in Allentown. I want us to continue as we were, to be a great nation, accepting of all faiths, accepting of all people, bringing in new blood, people of color, people of different religions. And for anybody who's afraid of that, I want to say to you, this nation is based on the greatness of immigrants, on the things that they bring in, on the new blood, on the willingness to start from nothing, or less than nothing, from the basis of being refugees, from the basis of those people being Nazis, from people fleeing the Khmer Rouge, from people fleeing any type of war, including in Syria. I just want to remember that Allentown is based on those freedoms and those rights granted to immigrants, and I would not exist if it were not so.
My name is Muhammad Khakuk, and I'm a Muslim, and I'm a Muslim activist. Many people have known me, but today I'm going to bring up, because I was told like a four o'clock that this meeting is going to happen, so I'm going to talk something about what I read today in the morning. First of all, I read this op-ed piece in the Morning Call, which is by Reverend Janus Aris, pastor of Calvary Moravian Church, and everybody should read that article. And it starts, "Does America Hear Jesus' Call to Welcome the Strangers?" That's one. Number two, this issue is very important, but I don't know how many of you people here know, and most of them, either the family, the friend, coworkers, is affected by drugs, alcohol, and opiates. I just want to give you statistics, that 78 people die a day of this related alcohol, opiates, and drugs. We are debating, looking for this immigration thing, but what we should be doing today is looking for our youth. Seventy-eight kids died, and I'm sure everybody in this room has been affected by alcohol, drugs, and coworkers getting involved in that, and it costs medical billions of dollars. Number two, I'm going to start with a couple of quotes from Pope Francis. Pope Francis has made the migration one of his top issues of this concern. He has spoken to Lent about need for human immigration policies that respects sensitivity of the family and the dignity of the person. He said that at the Congress when he visited here. "I am most grateful to your invitation to address this joint session, the land of free and a home of brave. I would like to think that the reason for this is that I too am a son of a great, son of an immigrant, of a great continent, from which we all have received so much and towards which we share a common responsibility. In recent centuries, millions of people have come to this land to pursue their dream of building a future in freedom. We, the people of this continent, are not fearful of foreigners because most of us were once a foreigner. I say this to you as a son of immigrant, knowing that so many people of you are also dissidents, dissidents from immigration." Now, on the cost, there is a CBO, this is the Congressional Budget Office, and public argument on economic impact of immigration in America. And one can read that report, and it says, "The net, direct spending without immigration reforms, without the net difference would be a deficit of $6.3 million." That was from 2015 to 2025, in President, ex-President Obama's time. So that's a CBO, so there's very negative impact on immigration regulations, creating that immigration regulations. Next thing is penalizing jurisdictions for doing what they know will help them keep their community safe, but only make communities less safe. With the budget restraint, it makes no sense to deny cities or community of much-needed federal police and community development and disaster relief fund simply because of local officials. I think I'll end there because I've got a lot of things, but it was that a very short notice, I came to say here, but one should read the article of Reverend Janus Aris, and I would, everybody should ask themselves, what would Jesus or the Messiah say about the immigration, and how can we welcome them here? That's all I want to say, before you make any decisions as county officials and state officials. What would the Jesus, if he comes here today, say? Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Mark Pinsley. I'm a resident of the Lehigh Valley. I'm also a member of Unite for America, which is a bipartisan organization that tries to put the left and the right together. I have a letter that I'd like to read and enter into the minutes to the commissioners. "The United States has a long history of welcoming immigrants, refugees, and their families. These people enrich our community as mothers, fathers, employees, students, religious and community leaders, and neighbors. I believe that people have become afraid of the term 'sanctuary.' It is important to know what being a sanctuary means and what it does not mean. It does not mean that we are a haven for unlawful immigrants. Immigration laws aren't forced in both sanctuary and non-sanctuary communities. In a sanctuary community, the government will still deport unauthorized immigrants. Local officials in sanctuaries can still report unauthorized immigrants to the government and still take legal action as needed. However, sanctuaries allow unauthorized immigrants to report crimes and volunteer as witnesses with local police. This makes everyone safer."
Yes, yes.
Being a sanctuary means that we will not use our resources, like federal anti-immigration laws, designed to crack down on undocumented immigrants. The responsibility for unauthorized immigration will continue to rest with the federal government. Removing our sanctuary status would contribute to a climate of fear that is, and is counterproductive. I trust that law enforcement will act justly so immigrant victims and witnesses are not frightened to come forward and assist police when necessary. I also expect that law enforcement will uphold our state's laws and make sure that those who are performing illegal acts go through our justice system. It is the federal government's responsibility to establish a well-thought-out plan that treats undocumented immigrants fairly and also protects our borders and our people. Once the federal government puts forward his comprehensive plan, then we can move forward as a nation. But until that plan arises, we must keep our local community safe. Having trust in our community creates that safety. Being a sanctuary helps keep us safe. Thank you.
My name is Basilio Venier, and I live in Lehigh County. Much of the rhetoric flying around here now is pretty much false. Lehigh County reports to federal authorities when they are going to release an illegal immigrant from custody. The current president changed the rules, but as of now, Lehigh County has been complying with federal law. While ICE enforcement is important, it is also important that we foster positive relationships with our law enforcement officers and our community here in Lehigh County. It has been shown that in communities with respect, that we respect the Constitution and require warrants, like we do here in Lehigh County, illegal and legal residents are more likely to cooperate in an investigation and to report. I am proud to stand, and I'm proud that our county stands, for cooperating with federal authorities, but also in helping to foster vibrant Latino communities and those citizens. As a former member of the Bethel School Board, I can say this. I worked with students who are illegals and legals. Those children just came here with a dream, just as their parents did. A dream to live out their life and in pursuit of their happiness. They weren't hurting nobody, they weren't threatening nobody, they weren't beating people up, they were just living their lives. All they asked to do is live their lives without fear. It is our job as a community to continue to instill those values of happiness, respect, and freedom for our children and our communities. So I thank you for what you have done. I ask you to continue to stand up for our community, and I'm glad to say I stand with the Latino community, illegal immigrants and legal immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for addressing the commissioners. Commissioners have listened, and thank you for coming out. We're gonna move on. Unless you have something new to talk about that has hardly been discussed.
Because I'm the Human Relations Commissioner chairperson, so I just wanted to quote the ordinance of Pennsylvania and of Allentown as of right now. It does say that under Pennsylvania and under Allentown ordinance, that anyone has the right to be of whatever they want, whatever sex, whatever race, but most important, national origin and ancestry. So, we need to stop dividing each other and come together. I am, Jessica Lee Ortiz, of my parents are German, they are German descendants, and without them, there would not be many parts of Allentown. So we need to understand that it is built on immigrants here. I am a Latino, but I am a German. So we need to understand, we need to stop dividing the government and come as one. We have enough division.
Thank you. Anything else you would like to comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to first off say, thank everyone for coming out tonight. We don't often get a big crowd like this, and honestly, we want to get everyone out. I know there's a lot of emotion on both sides, and I understand that. If I can just bring it back to really what our resolution back in 2014 was about, we operate in prison. That's, we don't have a police force, we do have sheriffs, but by and large, the people that are incarcerated, they're brought to us. We did get caught up in a lawsuit, and we heard what the outcome of that was. And we're kind of in the middle. We do want to comply with ICE and work with them. We try our best to, yeah, we let ICE know when someone's getting out, if they're looking for them, we'll definitely comply with their detainers in that case. We just don't hold anyone anymore solely on the detainer. If they're in there for something else, ICE still gets notified. So, thanks again for coming out. I just wanted to clarify that and try to bring it back to the issue that the resolution was about.
Commissioner Jones, thank you, Mike.
I'll be the last person. I'll be the last person. I just want to read from the ordinance itself, which I was the sponsor for, for those that are concerned about potential illegals not having any accountability and just being able to walk out of a prison. On the last of the page, Section 2A, "To the extent practicable under the circumstances, the Lehigh County Department of Corrections shall advise the applicable federal agency of the date and time when the subject of the detainer shall not otherwise be detained so as to permit the federal agency the opportunity to assume custody." Part B, "Once the subject of the detainer is not otherwise detained, the Lehigh County Department of Corrections shall release the subject of the detainer from county custody unless Lehigh County Department of Corrections receives judicial, a judicially issued detainer warrant or order." So, we're not gonna hold anybody without the proper paperwork. But when we get ready to let that individual go, ICE will be notified. Hey, he's gonna be let go Friday, 2:00. If you want him, come get him, but we're not gonna hold him for you. So this ideal that somehow folks are just gonna be running rampant is just not reflective of the realities here in Lehigh County. And I join Commissioner Swer to say, it's nice to see all of you guys out. You know, we're gonna be talking about whether we invest $50 million, $100 million, $103 million, $122 million in Cedar Brook. I'm sure all of you have some loved ones who live in Cedar Brook. It'd be nice to see you back when we have those conversations. $400 million of your tax dollars are determined in this room, and it'd be nice to see some of you come back out sometime.
Once again, thank you for coming out and addressing the commissioners. Thank you. We're gonna move along. Mr. Clark, is there anything other to share with you for tonight?
No, sir.
All right, Mr. Clark, here we go. Would you please introduce the first revised appointment for tonight's...
Sure, we have a revised appointment for Mr. Jeffrey J. Morgan. The revised term is 12/31/21.
People, please, please. Please keep it down, thanks. Again, Mr. Clark, I'm sorry.
No problem. This is a revised appointment of Mr. Jeffrey Morgan to the Lehigh County Authority. The revised term is 12/31/21.
Great. Comments from Commissioner Brice?
This is a re-stating the appointment for Mr. Morgan and clarifying the expiration date of this term. Mr. Morgan was approved at our last meeting by a 9-0 vote, and I would encourage that be carried through again, so I moved his reappointment for a term December 31, 2021.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Any public input? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving this reappointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Reappointment passed. Mr. Kirk, Clark, would you please introduce the next revised appointment?
Same situation, Mr. Chairman. This is a revised reappointment to Lehigh County Authority, Linda Rosenfeld. The term's revised to properly reflect 12/31/21.
Mr. Brice?
I moved the reappointment of Ms. Rosenfeld for a term to expire December 31, 2021.
Any other commissioner comments? Any public input? All those in favor of approving this appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clark, would you please introduce the first new appointment?
First new appointment is to Lehigh County Industrial Development Authority. The appointment is Mr. John Zients. Term expires 12/31/21.
Thank you. Commissioner Brice?
I don't believe Mr. Zients is here this evening, but by recommendation of the Governance Committee, I'll move his appointment to the Lehigh County Industrial Development Authority for a term to expire December 31, 2021.
Great. Any other additional comments from commissioners? Any public input?
Wait, do we get a second?
We should get a second. Seconded by Commissioner Arson. Any public input? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clark, would you please introduce our final appointment for tonight?
Final appointment is to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. The appointee is Mr. Owen O'Neil. The term expires 12/31/21.
Thank you. Commissioner Brace?
Mr. Chair, Mr. O'Neil is here this evening, I think he survived the excess. So perhaps a couple of words for Mr. O'Neil. It was a positive recommendation from the Governance Committee, and we appreciate your presence here tonight. So the podium and then.
Yeah, just want to say I appreciate the appointment to Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. I do have a planning background. I do, I've been involved, I've worked for, I've worked for Atlanta for seven years now. I've been involved in public transportation for over 20 years, so I do bring that perspective to the Planning Commission. I think I should, I will look forward to serving.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Any other commissioner comments?
I'll move Mr. O'Neil's appointment to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hartsel. Any public input? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That brings us to the first of all business. Mr. Clark, would you please introduce the next first bill?
Mr. Chairman, first I'll introduce a motion. No, I'm sorry. You're correct. My apologies, we're on old business, which is Bill 2017-07, waiving the provision of Article 8 of the Administrative Code for the purchase of a canine for the office of the sheriff and sponsors Commissioner Creighton.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
By this ordinance, the Board of Commissioners authorizes the purchase of a canine for the office of the sheriff. The county's administrative code-based procedures are not suitable for procuring a specialized canine, and are therefore waived for this purchase.
Sponsor comments. Commissioner Creighton?
Thank you, Chairman Osteen. Yes, this resolution allows the sheriff to purchase an explosive dog that will be used.
This will be in the Booper, the Liberty Show.
Any other commissioner comments? Any public input? Hearing none, all those in favor approving Commissioner Bill 2017-07, please say aye.
Aye.
Bill passes. Mr. Clark, would you please read the motion regarding the CTA expense?
After offside, false start. The motion reads that necessary expenses are approved for Commissioner Docerty to attend the 2017 County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania Spring Conference to be held in Harrisburg, PA from March 26 to March 28.
Thank you. Any commissioner comments on the motion? Motion. Motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Brace, seconded by Commissioner Creighton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Mr. Clark, would you please introduce our first resolution for tonight?
First resolution tonight is 2017-22 honoring Lillian Dean Duran upon obtaining Girl Scout hold. This resolution sponsored by Commissioner Osteen.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
I would defer to the sponsor for this particular resolution.
Thank you. Well, it's just a pleasure to honor Lillian with the achievement of obtaining the highest honor in Girl Scouts, and, you know, I'm proud of her accomplishments, and I know Lehigh County is proud of her accomplishments. So very, very excited about this. Any other commissioner comments?
Do we know what the project was? I'm continually impressed by the Girl Scout projects to get this award and by the Boy Scout projects to get the Eagle Award, and it's.
In this particular case, we didn't get the project. The details are very hard.
Okay.
Any public input on the Williams achievement? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2017-22 passes. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules to consider Resolution 2017-23 approving a professional services agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services, Inc.?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Holt. Any comments? Any public input? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Clark, would you please introduce the resolution?
Resolution 2017-23, sponsored by Commissioners Holt and Jones. The title is "Approving a Professional Services Agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services Incorporated." A couple procedural notes, Mr. Chairman. For the public tonight are hard copies of this resolution, even though it wasn't on our agenda. It has been on our website since March 7, because it was reviewed in committee by March 8. The reason it's not part of the packet was concern between the county and vendor over some insurance changes that might have been locked out of the sign.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Madam Solicitor, would you please summarize?
By this resolution, the Board of Commissioners approves a professional services agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services. The purpose of the agreement is to provide a job classification and compensation study for the county of Lehigh. The proposed agreement is attached to the resolution as Exhibit A. Resolution approval is required because of the professional service agreement in excess of $10,000.
Thank you. Sponsor comments? Commissioner Holt?
Yes, this was, we thought through an RFP process in order to select this particular vendor, and there were four responses, and we were extremely impressed with their extensive county experience and just are looking forward to utilizing their expertise to provide the pay set a year.
Commissioner Jones, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, this is, the value of this contract is $80,000, and it's a third of what we had originally anticipated that we would need to spend. What this will do is this will provide us some different models for us to consider how we'll address building a compensation modeling system that can carry us forward. The initiation of this doesn't commit ourselves as a board to any of the models being proposed, but it initiates and authorizes them to begin the study itself.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Any other commissioner comments? Any public input? All those in favor of approving Resolution 2017-23, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Mr. Clark, would you please introduce tonight's bill on your new business?
On our new business, we have Commissioner mail 2017-08, approving a lease agreement between the county of Lehigh and Lehigh Valley Hospital, sponsored by Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
By this ordinance, the Board of Commissioners approves a lease with Lehigh Valley Hospital. The county will be operating a child advocacy center on the sixth floor of the hospital property located at 17th and Chu Streets. The proposed lease is attached to the ordinance as Exhibit A. Ordinance approval is required to exempt this lease from the provisions of Section 808.1 of the County Administrative Code.
Thank you. This bill is sponsored by Commissioner Jones. Would you like to add any comment?
No, other than the value of the lease is just $1 a year, so we're greatly appreciative of Lehigh Valley Hospital for their community sponsorship.
Any commissioner comments? Any public input? Commissioner Bill 2017-08 has had its first reading and is scheduled for its second reading and discussion and vote at our next meeting. I think those are the committee reports. Any committee reports by our commissioners?
One item, Mr. Chairman, Friday, 8:45 to 10:00. Commissioners Docerty, Jones, Osborne, they're going to attend the kickoff meeting for the RKO financial plan. I received the Commissioner Holt's comments and forwarded them to our vendor. If anybody has anything to add, there's still time.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any commissioner announcements? Is there a motion for a German?